Now, I would like to call the meetings to order. This is the Oregon City Commission, and today is Wednesday, February 4th. Good evening, I'm Alice Norris, the mayor.
Daphne West, Commissioner President.
James Nacita.
Doug Munich.
Rocky Snell.
Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which we stand, on one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
On Saturday night was a very important event. It was the Chamber Annual Dinner, which is the opportunity where the city reveals its Citizen of the Year. And as was the case last year, our Citizen of the Year was unable to attend, but so we have invited him to come this evening. Our Citizen of the Year is Chuck Clemens, and I would like you to come forward to the microphone, and I would like to read what I read at the Chamber event. Congratulations, by the way, on your selection. It doesn't come with a check.[74.54][74.54](Laughter). But it does come with great honor. So, this is what I read. "It's about time we recognize this year's Oregon City Citizen of the Year. Few have left their mark as deeply on this community. In fact, our Citizen of the Year served as Chamber President and even modeled a swimsuit in the Chamber Fashion Show at the Riverside Pool. I do have the incriminating photo. But that's not the reason that we honor you. Concerns for children and education have dominated your resume, but that's not the reason that we honor you as a former teacher. Even though Clackamas County Community College recently named an endowment and a design lab in the college's art center after you, and this person was recent-- and you were recently President of the Oregon Community College Association, and even though you were President of Oregon City Public-- President Superintendent of Oregon City Public Schools for 10 years, we don't honor you also because you have been President of the Regional Arts and Culture Council, served on the Portland Center for Performing Arts Board, served as Chair of the Clackamas County Arts Alliance and Cultural Trust. That's all good stuff, but that's not the reason for your honor. We name you our 2009 Citizen of the Year because you steered our Elevator Art Project from inception to completion. As Chair of the Elevator Art Committee, you led the National Artist Selection Process, the fundraising, the citizen involvement activities. In fact, we know you even took the artist out on your boat so he could better see the environment around the elevator. When we held the public art dedication in September, you and your committee knew that you-- that your work was-- would impress generations of citizens from the 120,000 annual ridership to visitors exploring Oregon City. We knew they would enjoy elevations and transition, the unique and distinctive lenticular prints that are installed in the viewing deck and in the tunnel of our most visible and beloved city icon, thanks to the work of you and your committee. So, thank you, Chuck Clemens, for making our community a better place."[198.12][198.12](Applause). And here's another plaque for you all.[207.62][207.62](Laughter). We hope you won't have to build a bigger wall. Yes, you may, please.
Well, Madam Mayor, Members of the Commission. Thank you very much. I'm very sorry I wasn't able to be in attendance Saturday night. This is very pleasurable for me to be here tonight. Let me just say that that elevator project, no way could come off as successfully as it did without the leadership of persons such as yourselves, the members of the Oregon City Commission. Your leadership for livability and ambiance in our city really is amazing, and I've felt that all the way through the process. I would also like to thank the other members of our Citizen Committee, because they really put some time in and some very, very thoughtful work into the selection of the artist and working with him. And also, I really need to pay tribute to the-- to your staff members, and especially to Nancy Crossar and John Lewis. They're just, you know, they were priceless to work with. They've got a tremendous workload, and yet they-- they put the time in that it took to really make this project come off successfully. And it wasn't just the art that made the project successful. It was redoing the tile in the entry tunnel. It was adding to the lighting, which was a big issue with some of our committee members, that it made that place just glow day and night, actually. And so, this project, by no means was my success. It was the success of a major team, a political team, your staff team, and your other citizens on the committee. So, on their behalf, really, thank you so much for this award.
And isn't that great, that the sign of a good leader is someone who can pass the credit around? So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, too. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the sesquicentennial moment, and I have-- I'm walking on a resolution tonight that you have at your places. It's a really very, very important resolution. So, it's-- I know it's unusual, and we don't need to read it twice, but I'd like to go over this with you. It's a resolution addressing the illegal, partisan, unconstitutional, and unlawful actions of the past and requiring the return of the state capital to Oregon City. Whereas, there is no dispute that Oregon City was the original and legal capital of the provisional government as established by the settlers in 1843. And whereas, a constitution was drafted and government meetings were held in Oregon City annually until the discovery of gold in California made convening a quorum difficult due to the mass exodus of males from Oregon. And whereas, a major accomplishment of the 1848 session was to spoil an attempt to move the capital from Oregon City to Salem. Whereas, in 1849, Oregon City was the political, commercial, and industrial capital of Oregon as well as the hub of transportation. And whereas, Governor Joseph Lane, a Democrat appointee in a Whig town, proclaimed Oregon to be a U.S. territory in March 1849. And the 1849-50 session of the territorial legislature was held in Oregon City, the first day at Rose Farm, and the remaining days at the new State House Hotel on Main Street. And whereas, the Democrats in 1850 became rapidly dissatisfied with the Whigs, and Governor Lane left Oregon City hurriedly following the Whitman murder trial, while Alse Hill Bush, who published The Oregon Statesman in Oregon City, also fled and took his newspaper with him to Salem to print vile articles against Oregon City. And whereas, due to the lack of a quorum in the 1850-51 session, since the Democrats began holding their own illegal sessions across the river in Lynn City, now West Lynn, and Oregon had two capitals for a period of three years. And whereas, the illegal and heinous Lynn City gathering drafted an omnibus bill to make Salem the capital, since the 1848 congressional legislation gave the local legislature the power to seat the capital wherever it pleased. And whereas, Governor Gaines rightly agreed that such a law would be vetoed if not voided, and ruled that Oregon City was still the legal seat of government. And he was upheld by U.S. Attorney Armory Holbrook. And whereas, the above actions angered the Salem clique who lured the 1851-52 territorial legislative session to come to Salem at the Oregon Institute, now Willamette University, the result of which was that the Oregon City State House could not raise a quorum and gave up trying on September 17, 1851. And whereas, Governor Gaines asked the Supreme Court to force the Democrats back to Oregon City, and Chief Justice Nelson and Judge Strong declared the omnibus bill void and that Oregon City was still the capital. However, another justice opined that the opinion was void because the court had not met in Salem, the legislature's official capital. Whereas, in 1852, Governor Gaines wrote a memorial to President Millard Fillmore, asking him to order the Democrats back to Oregon City. But at the same time, Matthew Dede wrote a memorial to the Democratic-controlled Congress to make Salem the capital, and both were successful. Whereas, the U.S. Supreme Court upheld the decision of the Oregon Supreme Court and declared Oregon City the lawful seat of government. And whereas, Congress also passed the bill requested by Dede, and in 1852, Congress named Salem the legal capital of Oregon. Sadly, Millard Fillmore was forced to sign it. And whereas, with the Whig Party officially dead, a Democrat in the White House and the Republicans unwilling to continue the capital issue, the first recombined session of the Oregon Legislature met in December 1854 in the unfinished Capitol Building in Salem. The Know-nothings, a secret and powerful group in Oregon City-- I think they're still meeting (Laughter) --and Portland, made a successful bid to move the capital to Carvalis. And whereas, in 1864, 13 years after the Salem clique unlawfully stole the capital from Oregon City after ignoring the territorial governor, the Oregon Supreme Court, the President of the United States, the U.S. Supreme Court, and three votes of the people of Oregon, Salem finally received lukewarm permission to keep the capital. Now, therefore be resolved that due to these irregularities of process and procedure, this blatant disregard for the rule of law, that the state capital, the seat of Oregon's government, be returned to its legal and rightful place in the city of Oregon City.[637.16][637.16](Knocking). And I (Applause) guess-- I guess I-- actually, I see in our audience tonight that we have the Speaker of the Oregon House, Dave Hunt, and his wife, Tanya. Welcome. So, if this gains approval this evening, we hope that you will be able to introduce this bill now.[660.12][660.12](Laughter). Now, I guess, since I'm the staff on this, I would like to say that I've done a little bit of legwork on it, and so I do move this resolution. But I talked to Terry Emmert, the owner of Emmert International, who does heavy-duty moving, and he suggested that, actually, this isn't a new idea, but when Governor Goldschmidt was in office, he had offered to move the governor's mansion to Oregon City. And Mr. Emmert said that when he finishes the 3,000-ton move that he's doing in Salt Lake City, he would be glad to get on that for us and could move those buildings right here to Oregon City. So, is there a second to my motion?
Well, I certainly second that.
Can I offer a friendly amendment?
Oh, yes, of course. Commissioner Nacita.
I'm wondering if we're going to be ambitious like this. We should go for the whole ball of wax and go for, like, the Oregon territorial capital again, so we can lord over Washington and Idaho and Northern California.
I second that as well. Those boundaries were very large.
I would say with a major shift in the-- actually, a major shift in the United States population versus the West, we should probably bring the national capital here as well.[731.63][731.63](Laughter). No, no, that's not a good idea.[734.63][734.63](Laughter).
Well, the only concern that I had was that I'm not sure bringing all that non-tax property into our community would be good in the long term, but I assume we can work that out with the city of Salem, perhaps, or maybe the legislature capacity, an amendment that exempted that property. So, is there further discussion or public comment?
(Inaudible).
Well, there you go. We could apply for stimulus money. I like that. That's a really good idea. Okay, with that, we--
It could be a resolution to our school issue as well, possibly. Maybe we'd have more control over funding in the state.[782.44][782.44](Laughter).
That's an excellent idea. That's an excellent idea. Okay, seeing no other persons who wish to testify, Nancy, would you hold the commission, please?
(Inaudible). Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nacita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Speaker Hunt, would you please come forward and take this resolution?[808.63][808.63](Laughter). No, this is actually very unexpected. I did not--
(Laughter). My pleasure.[817.57][817.57](Laughter).
Would you like to-- since you're here, would you like to take an opportunity to address us and the people of the city?
Well, thank you, Mayor, Members of the Commission. This is actually very timely. We are going to be having a special Saturday session of the legislature on Oregon's birthday, February 14th, and you may see this issue very prominently featured in that agenda.[843.94][843.94](Laughter).
Shall we plan to attend to lobby?
That actually might be an excellent idea. We've got a lot of votes from Clackamas County for this resolution. We don't have a lot of votes from other parts of the state who currently in Salem. Although, you know, one of the dynamics in Salem right now is there's lots of complaining about the fact that there is so much state agency land that is currently untaxed, so it would-- there may be some-- you may-- actually, you may have an ally in the mayor of Salem in terms of moving the capital of Oregon City. I had a couple other issues, just in terms of an update. You want me to do that during Citizen Comments, or you want me to do it now?
You're here, so why don't you go ahead and do that?
The-- I'm really here as a date with my wife, but I figured as I was along with her--
You know how to show a girl a good time.[887.13][887.13](Laughter).
Where else do you come in Oregon City but the Oregon City Commission? I think there are-- there are a few issues that I'll try and get through very briefly that I think are going to have direct impact on you all. Obviously, the budget issues are really devastating right now. We've got about an $800 million hole for the rest of this biennium and over a $2 billion hole for the next biennium. Over the next few weeks, you'll see some specific proposals play out around that. The federal stimulus package hopefully will help dig us out of that hole, but there's going to be-- and the rainy day funds that we've set aside over the last two years will help dig us out of that hole, but you're going to see some major impacts on services which are going to have some negative dynamics for all of us as we're really in this together. On the positive front, you're seeing-- you're going to see a real focus on capital construction in this session. In fact, we're passing the first in a series of bills across the floor tomorrow that will involve some capital projects in Clackamas County, at Clackamas Community College, and across the state. This is a first effort of trying to do some economic stimulus and get back-- get at some long-term deferred maintenance and some new capital construction, but it's going to be the first of several projects, and so hopefully you'll see some good projects that will be of benefit to issues that you're concerned about. Ethics reform, you're well aware that we passed really the first major update in 2007 to ethics since Watergate.
Yeah, and we didn't like it very well.
And like any major change in the law, there are some changes that need to be made in that reform, and so you'll see some, I think, some easing back of some of the more over-the-top provisions of Senate Bill 10, probably relatively early in the session, trying to protect the core ethics reforms in terms of accountability and disclosure while amending some of the over-the-top provisions. And then finally, in terms of transportation, fortunately, all the transportation packages that we're going to be passing will be outside of the regular budget. It's going to involve some new additional fees and some other revenue, but we are going to-- I think at the end of the day, we will, I'm confident, we're going to pass a major transportation investment, which will, of course, include revenue sharing with Oregon City and other cities and counties across the state. So, hopefully, despite this budget crisis, we're going to be able to really do some major transportation projects that we should have been doing for a long period of time that will not only deal with some projects of statewide significance like highways, but also deal-- help you deal and deal with the state system of backlog maintenance and modernization in a way that is long, long, long overdue. So, that, I think, will be a signature positive issue for this session and a session that's going to be filled with some very tough budgets.
Well, Dave, Speaker Hunt, all we really care about is that we receive funding for I-205-213, our drug handle, so we hope you could make a promise this evening.[1064.58][1064.58](Laughter). Anyway, consider that kindly when it comes before you.
I shall. And frankly, Mayor, I think a lot of the-- I think my intent certainly is to focus on a project or focus on a transportation package that really does leave a lot of the decision-making to the local acts, in our case, J-PAC, in terms of designating what those priority projects are. And so, obviously, you all are very, very connected in that process. I think the legislature will make it clear that there are some major statewide projects that need some focus, but I think a lot of the resources will flow through the local processes, so we're not passing a bill that's listing out 500 or 600 different projects, but really focusing on a few that are statewide significance and then investing dollars out into regions around the state to address backlog transportation needs.
Right.
I always ask all of what we're interested in. If we're going to become the state capital, I want to see Phase 2, Phase 3, Phase 4, and Phase 5 of the Muffin Bowl project.[1125.13][1125.13](Laughter).
Well, we'll have to begin to think differently when that capital moves.
That's true.
Well, we appreciate you taking the time out to come to us and giving us that update and then carrying our resolution on to Salem.
I will carry it proudly, and my kids are probably the biggest fans of this resolution of all. Big fans of Andrew and Emily tonight.
Great, thank you very much. Next, we have, as we expect from all of our advisory committees, an update, an annual update, and this one is from the Friends of the Oregon City Library. Welcome. Do you have a reluctant cohort here?
Very reluctant.[1166.65][1166.65](Laughter). I'm Linda Van Haverbeek, and this year I'm the president of the Friends. This is Karen Maury, past president of the Friends and bookstore manager. I left at some of your places invitation to join the Friends, and I also give an invitation to everyone in the city. There's-- Daphne, you're already a member.
Okay.
And so is Doc, so I didn't leave you one.
I think I am, too.
Well, the last I heard, you hadn't renewed yet.[1198.58][1198.58](Laughter).
I better get on that.
Yes. And we extended invitation to all the citizens of Oregon City to join, and there's a number of different membership levels, and we do a lot of interesting and good work for the city as Friends, and so this year, as we have in the last few years, the Friends were at the farmer's market every Saturday except the rainouts, and they netted over $3,200. And in lieu of rent to the farmer's market, we made a donation of $300 to them, and so that's all donations of books and time from five couples that managed to do that, and so we were very lucky. This year, under Karen's leadership, we also expanded the bookstore, the used bookstore, and we're very proud of that because we now have-- Karen's very proud of it. We have 1,300 square feet. We have-- we're visible from the street, that we're getting a lot of walk-ins because of that visibility. We're getting good, both books donated to us and people buying those, and we're very proud of that, and we would like also to tell everyone in the city that we'd be happy to accept their donations because we go to support the children's programming and the building fund. We have all kinds of things that-- all kinds of programming and material acquisitions. This year, we've increased our funding for children's program to include the children's programming at spring break and to continue the programming over the summer reading program. There's been new AV shelving purchased and makes the CDs much more accessible than they were, so enjoy that. The Friends, again, gave their usual $10,000 for material acquisitions, and we're looking forward to have the staff reassess their needs so that we can plan on those. We're continuing to raise funds through the book cart, to the raffles, to merchandising of calendars, and right now, the Bucks for Books contributions that's on the checkout desk is being given to Estacada, and the Friends are matching those funds for the months of January and February, if I remember correctly. And so, we're matching up to $500, whatever people from the city of Oregon City, because if you don't know that they were flooded out during the Christmas, New Year's rains, and everything on the bottom shelf was ruined and many of the other books because of the high humidity.
So, very tragic. Their library is only two years old.
Yes, it's a beautiful library. Beautiful library. And so, I also want to thank all of the staff and the commission and everyone to be so good to work with and to value our contributions. We especially want to thank Scott Archer. This year, we're looking to work with you to get a new library director, and we want to tell you that we're very pleased to have been working with Scott. He's been very professional, he's been very respectful, he values our involvement, and he's a very good communicator, and so I want you to note that, because that, we're very proud of working with Scott. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
And we want-- we're looking forward to working with all of these people, all of your staff, all of you, but we also work very closely with the library board itself, the library foundation that's forming right now, and towards a library building. And so, we've also been doing some work and talking to the county commissioners in the past year, and so we hope that you're aware of some of the work that we do do.
You're very visible. Thank you very much for all you do. Questions from the commission? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our next report, speaking of children, as we just were, is from Tanya Hunt, Executive Director of the Children's Center of Clackamas County. Welcome, Tanya.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to come and offer an update on the work of the Children's Center and a night out for my husband and myself, obviously.[1465.33][1465.33](Laughter).
Could someone get them a glass of water? I just can't imagine how excited they'll be about that.
I think we have plans after this.[1474.23][1474.23](Laughter). But I did want to stop by and offer an update on the work of the Children's Center. We are Clackamas County's Child Abuse Assessment Center, and I know some of you are very well of our work, very aware of our work, and familiar with our program, but some of the newer commissioners may not know, and some of our people here in the city of Oregon City may not be familiar with our work. The Children's Center serves all of Clackamas County, but we are located here in Oregon City, up near Willamette Falls Hospital, and we provide medical assessments for children who are suspected to be victims of abuse. We are the designated medical provider for those services in Clackamas County, so we're serving every community in Clackamas County, from Sandy down to Wilsonville, up to Lake Oswego, Estacada. All the communities are referring children to us for our specialized medical assessments. Last year, we served about 300 children, and that was actually representing quite a significant growth for us. Unfortunately, we still turned away about 100 children, and that was primarily because of lack of capacity in our facility, which is really strained to the max. So, we are in an effort right now to expand our capacity so we don't have to turn away children, and are looking forward to working with the county and people here in Oregon City to make sure that that capacity is expanded to meet the need for our county as this county grows. Most of the children we see are under the age of seven, and most of them are suspected victims of sexual assault. So, we're seeing a very vulnerable population of children. Our assessments include a full head-to-toe checkup to document signs of abuse, to make sure children are healthy as well as safe, and also a forensic interview so children have a chance to tell their story in their own words about any experiences they might have had regarding to the violence in the home or elsewhere. And then, we're also going to do treatment planning and support for that family. We want to make sure that that child and that family has the resources they need to move forward in their healing process. So, we're looking forward to continuing our service to the people here in Oregon City and throughout the county. I will tell you that the city of Oregon City is one of our largest referring agencies. We're always very pleased to hear from the city of Oregon City Police Department and to work with your detectives and sergeants in cases of suspected child abuse. Many cases come to us from those law enforcement agencies, and the city of Oregon City is definitely one of our top users in the county after the sheriff's office, and we always appreciate those referrals and want to be helpful to your police agency as they do their hard work of investigating possible crimes against children. So, we enjoy that partnership. We want to make sure that partnership continues and remains strong, and certainly appreciate their good work in that area. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Commissioner West?
Tanya, you were saying that most of your kids were under the age of seven, so I was listening to you say that you got your referrals from the sheriff and the police department. So, I was always under the impression you got a lot of them from the school district and from school counselors, but maybe it's not because of the age of the, you know, maybe that-- is that what the--
Many times, the initial report of concerns for child safety does start in the schools. Schools are the largest referring agency across the board, but most of their referrals are to either a police agency or to the Department of Human Services, those investigative agencies that have responsibility to look into a child's safety or the possibility of a crime having been committed. And then, those agencies often turn around and ask us for our help as a neutral third-party agency. We are not a part of government. We're actually really just a pediatric office as a nonprofit organization serving kids, so we can offer that neutral expertise to those investigative agencies when they need it.
Maybe you want to share with us your next fundraiser date, your luncheon, and you usually have a pretty good attendance for that.
Yes, we have a lot of fun. We have a women's luncheon in April, and I believe the date on that is April 25th. It's late April, and we have a wonderful collection of women throughout the county who support the work of the Children's Center, are very interested in being champions for kids, and always have a fun time at that event. And then, the guys are invited when we have our Fall Breakfast Event, and that's another really important gathering of business individuals, public officials, and individuals in the community who care about kids and want to support this work, serving vulnerable population of children.
Any other questions or comments? I just am so impressed with how that you and your staff and the community volunteers have grown the center, that you started with such limited resources and have built it up into a very important location, and we're pleased to house you here in Oregon City.
Thank you.
So, best of luck with your future work.
Thank you so much.
Greatly needed.
We'll continue to be in touch.
Thank you. Next, we move on to Citizen Comment, and I have a few of them. If you haven't yet filled out a card, why, please do so, and then, when you come to the microphone, please state your name and the city in which you live, and then you And then you may speak to us up to three minutes. So watch for the little lights, the little red light there on the box on the table, the speaking table. First, let's have Claire Mett and Kathy Hogan. Do you two come up together?
My name is Claire Mett. I'm here representing the Chamber of Commerce. First of all, I would like to thank the city's attendance at our annual dinner and auction, which was our kickoff for our 100th year in business, serving business in Oregon City. It was a great night. And we do really highly regard our partnership with the city and all the work that we do. I'm here primarily to just let the public know and to invite all the public to our State of the City, which our mayor, Alice Norris, gives an address that kind of looks at, I guess, the year in the past and what our future is, especially, which I think would be of great importance with the economic times. It is next Tuesday, February 10th. At 11:30, we'd start the lunch. And the program starts at 12:15 and is done by 1:00. And you do not, the reservations are for lunch, is $20. We do ask that you call in as soon as possible to the chamber office to make reservations. You do not have to have lunch. For $5, you can come and just have a cup of coffee and sit at a table so that, because we feel it's important to invite people that can't afford the $20. So we hope to see all of you there and participate. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy.
Hi. Commissioner, I'm Kathy Hogan. I'm in Incorporated Clackamas County. I have a question, and I would like somebody then either to email me or give me the information that when they make the decision at the planning commission, somebody asks to keep a record open, that they give you five days to keep that record open and to get your information in. Why is a weekend counted as the five days when the weekend, the city, is closed and people, not all people can afford to fax or have a computer to send something? If they want to get information in, it should be five working days. I'd like to know what ordinance, what resolution, and can that be changed? So that it is a little more fair to those.
I think we have someone here who could answer that for you. Mr. Sullivan.
I'll give you the usual lawyer's answer. It depends. There is a statutory entitlement, which is reflected in our city ordinances, that at the first hearing, and the first hearing only on a land use matter, that there be, at the request of any party, the ability to keep the record open for seven days. And I would construe that seven days to be seven calendar days. And if the last day falls on a weekend or a holiday, it will be the next business day. Okay? If, however, it is in addition to the first hearing, then there is no statutory entitlement. The commission, planning commission or this commission, on a second or later hearing, has the ability to either deny the request for a continuance or to grant it for any reasonable time period, bearing in mind the usual 120-day statutory limitation for making decisions.
I think the question on that one, though, is so the body can determine whether it's a calendar or business day?
Yes.
Okay.
Once you pass the first hearing date.
Okay, that's flexible. Okay.
Well, and the information we, I believe, was given, it was five days, not seven.
Again, if that was after the first hearing, then it's, the body is entitled to do that.
No, it's up to their discretion.
Okay. Thank you. Good question. Next, Damon Mayby and William Gifford.
Is this the Whisker Committee?
Yeah. This is the group that's celebrating the sesquicentennial, I think. Well, hey, welcome back.
Well, thank you. First, I guess I'll do what I unfortunately saw many citizens do, and that's start out with a minor correction, then a challenge, and then a request for funds.
And we'll say what we always say.
First, the correction, Madam Mayor, a moment is defined as one one-hundredth of a second. So your whereas is, I think, a little long.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Secondly, the second part is basically a question for both Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Nocida. A year and change ago, we voted to annex to the fire district. And part of that was a promise from the commission to hold taxes and to a certain specified limitation. The last four years of your term, or the next four years of your term, will be the last four years of that promise. We've got one year down, we're starting the second budget year. So my question to the two of you, and I, if you're prepared to answer this evening, that's fine, I'll gladly come back next session for it, is are you prepared to hold to that promise and not raise taxes beyond the limit of the promise? We currently, and it was a 99 cent raise, I think it's 380 is what our promise cap is, there's a potential to raise it another $1.25 beyond that if you can get a third vote, if the two of you choose not to honor that promise. So my question to you is, do you intend to honor that promise, given these tough economic times? And so that's the question. And then the third thing, now that I said, oh, hey, you're spending way too much. When I was in Washington, DC last year, I came across, I visited the Navin Memorial, which is on Pennsylvania Avenue, right across from the National Archives, and discovered that they have a commemorative wall there. And they have all sorts of stuff to follow. There is no commemorative plaque for the USS Oregon City. It happens to be our sesquicentennial year. And for a mere $3,000, which, considering it's not bad for what it is, we can put a plaque up saying, you know, from the grateful citizens of, or whatever. For those who do not know, the USS Oregon City was a cruiser, CA-122, built right at the end of World War II. She was the first ship in her class, which makes her unique. There was three ships total in the class. And of course, did not serve very long, but she was built, she was honored specifically as the class ship. So I will leave everything with Larry to...
I have a solution for you.
Would it be, oh, I don't know, OCCIT?
No, no. We have Oregon 150 Grants, $8,000 for, if you can prove to us with a simple letter, it's on our website, oc150.com, that your project will leave a legacy for the future. And to me, this sounds like a very good project. So you might consider that. The guidelines are on the website, oc150.com.
Okay. Well, thank you.
That's a great discovery. Thank you.
Just if I might, to clarify the, I guess, the resolution that's in place, three members of the commission can vote to have it sent to the public for a vote to actually increase rate above what we said. All five of us could actually vote to increase it without taking two of the people. So I guess what you're asking is, are they commended not to be one of five?
Well, yeah, two of them.
Or two of five?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. That's true.
And their answers are.
I'll take you up on it, Damon. And, you know, we've talked about this on the phone before. And I just wanted to get some clarification from you. And I think you mentioned it has to do with not raising taxes for new programs. Was that the way you framed it to me?
Well, it was, and/or new programs, that the funding would be to maintain the status quo. And there's a couple of minor caveats, like we're going to add a police officer, which is above the status quo. But yeah, it doesn't prohibit you from saying, we want a police levy and going out to vote with that, or a school levy, or whatever that is. But to just raise the cap was, basically the promise was the cap wouldn't be just raised because you need to paint the building.
And is that specifically geared towards the property tax?
Yes.
Yes.
As opposed to, say, putting a $10 assessment on speeding tickets so we can raise money to add more police officers?
There's strictly a property tax limitation.
It's a 99 cent increase over previous, and it actually came in at 93 cents this year.
Last year.
Well, for this current, yeah, it's in place now as the 93 cents.
And another question for clarification I would have is, how does that apply to unfunded mandates, for example? And I think the example I gave you was that Goal One says you will have a CIC officer and you will pay for it.
That has to be covered within the cap.
Okay. And the third example I'd give is everybody's favorite gnarly topic in Oregon City, urban renewal. Would you all, would you have broken that promise by raising the urban debt, urban renewal debt limit last year by 100 million or so? Would that have violated either the spirit or letter of what you're talking about?
The answer to that is no for two reasons. One, it's, urban renewal indebtedness is a loan against value as opposed to property tax, which is just a straight cost on assessed value. And so everybody pays the property tax, but urban renewal is limited. And it's a whole separate committee.
Right. So I can say then, I think I can commit to your promise, and I think that I go even farther because I'm one of those who support giving the people a right to vote on such things as urban, raising the urban renewal debt limit and voting, giving the public a right to vote on the issuance of urban renewal bonds. So I think I'm on board with you.
The city manager has a little insertion. I think you wanted to correct something, didn't you?
I think maybe what I should do is put this on...
You need a primer.
Exactly what we...
Yes, I think it's, because it's not just that, there is a whole plan. Yes.
And you have a budget committee coming up, so...
Let's put this on a, yes, and I think it would be good, we went over this at our retreat, but it might be good to review it in light of the question. Commissioner Smith.
Same questions, obviously, that Commissioner Nocida brought up as well. But, you know, I kind of feel the same way. But I definitely would like to see exactly what that commitment is. But I think that it's something I could support for sure.
Commissioner Neely.
From my standpoint, I think it does not apply to what the previous commission said their priorities were. We can change our priorities, whether it's unfunded mandate or not. The issue is to stay within that, within that amount, however we do that.
Yep, thank you. Thank you very much. William.
Madam Mayor and city commissioners, my name is William Gifford. I live in Oregon City. The mayor made reference to the commission retreat, which was held recently, and I was privileged to be able to make an attendance to that. At the end, in the dying embers of that, as people were hurrying to get out the door, there was an opportunity that I made a comment about volunteers as part of one of the city's goals. And immediately, the comments were on recognition of citizens, of citizen volunteers. And I think that was misconstrued. My comments were not the recognition of volunteers, which I think the city is doing a fairly good job of. My comments were specifically about recruiting volunteers and maintaining volunteers. And as I think that the city, at least intellectually, understands the tremendous economic value of volunteers to the city, it seems to me like a good return on the investment to find some way of encouraging volunteerism. I understand that other communities have a paid volunteer coordinator. I don't know that we have the funds to afford anything like that. But I think that some consideration ought to be made. And part of that, I'm hoping, is going to be undertaken by the CIC insofar as getting other neighborhoods involved and so on. But I would like to see a real commitment to the recruitment and care and feeding of new volunteers, not just the gratitude for existing volunteers, because it's the old 80/20, and we need a little bit more.
I'd like to quote from the minutes. William Gifford's citizen stated that he wanted to hear more about encouraging more volunteers. So I think you were accurately quoted.
Yeah, encouraging more volunteers, I didn't want it to be construed as just thanking volunteers.
Yes, no point well taken.
Encouraging more volunteerism perhaps would have been more.
Okay, thank you. And our last card, unless someone else has put one in, is Christine Kozinski.
Christine Kozinski, in Incorporated Clackamas County. Yesterday, I sent you all a letter regarding the Park Place School meeting. I actually wanted to title my letter, "The Death of a Community," because this is actually what happens when a school closes. The identity of the neighborhood becomes lost. The very heart of the community is gone as it struggles to find a way to stay together for common concerns affecting its families and children. Because there is no commonality any longer, ties become broken. Many families move away. Home values plummet because no one wants to move into a neighborhood without a school. Then subsequently, home values become affected in other parts of the city as news gets out about school closures and budget issues. As I stated in my letter, our schools are more than a building. They are the important institutions that integrate our neighborhoods into real communities. Our schools are indeed a place where miracles do happen every day, as our gifted teachers prepare our children for their futures and for the world ahead of them. I do not envy you. Your concerns in the past have been for future development. However, now, your concerns must lie with development which has already taken place. How will you keep your neighborhoods complete and healthy in an environment of diminishing dollars and city services? How will you market your city when possible school closures are looming ahead? This is too big of a task for the city to bear alone. I encourage you to rally your community and business leaders as well. I have attended two of the community school meetings, and I can attest to the outpouring of concerns from the citizens and their strong belief that if we all work together, we can make a difference for our community, our schools, and most of all, for our kids.
Thank you. Well said. Commissioner Smith?
I appreciate that. As a school teacher as well, obviously, this is a huge concern. And I would just mention that a lot of us are going to be in Salem on February 16th. And so I would encourage citizens of Oregon City to go out there as well and show our support for the need for more funding for our schools.
I thought of something that Mayor Norris had actually said a few months ago regarding Park Place. How can we possibly get this section to be actually part of Oregon City? It's going to be more difficult if that school closes. If you look back at communities that have lost their schools, they generally never regain their sense of community again.
Commissioner Neely.
I just want to say, I really empathize with that because the neighborhood I live in lost all three schools. It lost the library. It got converted to a good use in terms of the Carnegie Center, but it lost that, too.
Moving on, then, on the agenda, is there any item under, well, there's only one item on the consent agenda. Is there any reason to reorganize our agenda for the evening? Seeing none, we will take the business in the order in which it is listed. First, we have under general business, the first reading of an ordinance number 9-1,000 rescinding city of Oregon City ordinance number 97-1,000 and enacting policy number 5.07, vehicle and custodial inventories. And is our chief comrade taking that one?
I am, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Madam Mayor and city commissioners. The staff is recommending that the city commission adopt ordinance 091,000... The staff is recommending that the city commission adopt ordinance 091,000, rescinding City of Oregon City Ordinance 971,000, and adopting policy 5.07. The 971,000 was originally adopted in 97, when there were no laws, or no state laws governing the impound of vehicles and their inventory. Since then, the state law has changed, and we have a policy now which governs how we inventory policies. By rescinding the 971,000, we will take the two policies out of conflict right now, because there are some differences between the 971,000 and our current policy, which is updated according to state law, current state law. And sometimes, when we go to court on these types of inventory hearings, the adopted city commission, or, excuse me, the adopted city ordinance 971,000 would take precedent over our current policy, which is actually more in line with state law and our own accreditation practices. So that is the history on that. The rescinding 971,000 and adopting 091,000 would put us in more compliance with state law and our current policy.
Thank you for that report. Questions from commissioners? We have Commissioner Nacita.
Couple of questions. One is a really, really, really nitpicky legal question for Mr. Sullivan. Is there any difference between, from a legal standpoint, between the word rescind and the word repeal?
Not effectively, not effectively, you have the word repeal in the ordinance itself under subsection 1, so I think that does the job.
Okay. And question for Chief Conrad. I noticed under the definitions of valuables, we adopt the same amounts that were in the prior ordinance, and I'm just wondering, what's really kind of like the concrete purpose of those specific amounts? Are they what a statute prescribes? Is that something that we?
It's not prescribed by a statute, no. It's something that is pretty much in compliance with the other inventory policies throughout the state. And obviously, the value of property is really dependent upon the person whose property is being inventoried and taken. So it's, I think it's important that we keep these figures, because it allows us a clear-cut point at which we start inventorying things and assigning value to it.
Okay. But that, the inventory itself doesn't provide any less protection for those pieces of property or cash that aren't inventoried?
I'm not, I'm not following you.
You're saying only cash or property at these amounts get inventoried?
Correct.
Okay.
Those amounts are higher, yes.
Right. So something that, a piece of property with a value of $400 wouldn't get inventoried?
Again, I think it's hard for an officer on the scene to assign value that might differentiate between $100, say $400 and $500. Quite honestly, I think officers that go in and inventory a vehicle, if there's anything they think is remotely approaching those values, will inventory it.
Okay.
Other questions? If not, we have, before the motion, we have a speaker, Kevin Hunt. Please go forward.
My name is Kevin Hunt. I live at 1145 Sunny Lane. I'm an attorney in Clackamas County. I've handled a lot of cases dealing with inventories. I've been a practicing attorney since 1984. I admitted before the United States Supreme Court, and I just wanted to have, give you a few comments about why I'm going to recommend to you that you not adopt this tonight, and rather you send it back for further study. It has a number of constitutional flaws in it, and if you adopt it, you're going to be holding yourself open to class action suits and individual lawsuits, which, by the way, you already are open to at the present time. I will, I do want to say that this new proposed policy is a vast improvement over what was the city previously had. And even at that, the one that I would be most critical of that this would replace was still a progressive thing when it was done, because a lot of cities don't have them at all. And when you talk about the evil Lynn City across the river, I could tell you a lot of stories about that. So the police department should be very commended, both the former chief and the current acting chief. Getting into specifics, just a minor correction on the report itself. It's somewhat misleading to say that there were no laws governing vehicle impounds or inventories until 1997. These issues have arisen under Article 1, Section 9 of the Oregon Constitution for a number of years, and that obviously is the ultimate law in the state of Oregon, is the Constitution. So whether or not there's a statute that says one thing or another is kind of immaterial. Secondly, as I'll get to in a second, if I don't run out of time too fast, there's been federal court rulings that have interpreted the Oregon state laws on vehicle impoundments. I have a case in front of me. I'll leave all these materials with the clerk. Miranda versus City of Cornelius is a 2005 case, decided by the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. And in that case, they actually looked at the Oregon state statutes governing the impoundment of vehicles. Those statutes mirror to a great deal the Oregon City Ordinance, which is separate from this inventory issue, allowing the impoundment of vehicles. And a second case, United States versus Cassiers, a 2008 case, expounded on this further, only under California law, not under Oregon law. The bottom line is that the state law we have in the state of Oregon is in violation of the Fourth Amendment, at least as applied, and it's, the Oregon City Ordinance is governing the impoundment of vehicles, are in violation of the Fourth Amendment, at least as applied. Why am I talking about impoundments? Well, the reason for that is quite simple. You don't do an inventory unless you have first lawfully impounded a vehicle. That is a constitutional requirement. So if you don't have a legal, valid, and constitutional vehicle impoundment policy, there is no inventory that's permitted in the city of Oregon City. And any unlawful impoundment, any inventory that would be done pursuant to such an impoundment would no longer be an inventory.
Mr. Hunt, your time has expired. How much longer do you need?
I think if I had another three, I could probably do it.
Do you wish to grant that? All right, please continue.
Thank you.
Three more minutes?
There's some difference between how the federal constitution and the state constitution apply. Under the state constitution, the way our court looks, the Supreme Court looks at it is, an inventory is not a search, because it's not being done to discover evidence of crime, fruits of crime, or to take weapons out of the immediate area of a person who's arrested. Anytime you do a search, you have the warrant requirement implicated, and the issue becomes, is this vehicle mobile, and all these sorts of things. In the absence of a search warrant, these privacy intrusions are considered, they're presumed to be unconstitutional, and any evidence you get is going to be suppressed. That's what happened in my case that I'll leave with the clerk, in which, and in that case, the Oregon City Police Policy was declared unconstitutional by Judge Kelly, who was visiting from Hood River. And I wrote to several commissioners about that, and I know how busy people are, but I'm concerned, actually concerned about the welfare of the city's budget here, because this does need to be addressed. Under the Fourth Amendment, an inventory is a search, but it's considered an exception to the warrant requirement. The bottom line is this, that the sole purpose of an inventory, because it's to protect property and so on, as it says in this policy, because of that, it has to be very limited. It has to be promulgated by a politically accountable authority. The police chief is a politically accountable authority, because he's answerable to you and you're answerable to the voters. Some more specific problems with this specific policy. First of all, it defines police officer as any officer of the Oregon City Police Department. If you have an ordinance in the city of Oregon City that governs your inventories, it should apply to any peace officer who's executing the laws in Oregon City. Give you an example, my car was stopped, and it was towed, it was lawfully stopped, lawfully parked on Main Street of Oregon City. It was towed from the city streets of Oregon City from a lawful parking place by order of City of West Lynn police officers. I was denied the right to have my tow hearing, as is my right under the Oregon City Ordinance, before the Oregon City Municipal Court. I was required to litigate the issue in the West Lynn Municipal Court, which refused to disabuse itself of its jurisdiction. And this is not right. This is not right. We can't, and I don't understand how officers from another jurisdiction, they have every right to enforce the laws in Oregon City, but if they're going to haul cars off of our streets. There's a lot more problems in this, by the way, that I, fortunately, since I'm out of time, I didn't get to. But it's generally better than it was. If I could just, one quick comment on this issue of the value of items.
Sure.
If you base whether you're going to inventory on how much something is worth, especially if you're talking about cash or small items, you have now introduced discretion into the policy. Discretion is what killed your policy when it was, when it was litigated in my case. My suggestion to you is that you establish a task force with the police chief, city attorney, or deputy city attorney, representative of the police department, and a citizen, and I would certainly like to volunteer to be on that, and that you send this back for some tweaking. And I do think it's a great idea what's being done. Unfortunately, I don't think this is going to accomplish what you want, and I'm afraid that it might leave you open to litigation.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
I assume that you'd like to give a response. Chief Conrad?
Yes. The policy, as it's written, is in compliance with state law. It's been reviewed by Mr. Sullivan's office. It's been reviewed by the district attorney's office, and it's passed inspection by both of them.
Of course, I beat the district attorney's office on this very issue.
Mr. Sullivan?
Did you go through the hearings process, and then we can respond?
This is the first reading of an ordinance, so we will hear it a second time if it passes first, and this is an opportunity now for citizens to testify if you wish. So I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to testify? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And now, Mr. Sullivan.
Is that testimony other than people who had put cards in, or is this? I'm not sure.
It was, I just asked for public testimony, just now.
Then I'd like to testify.
Oh, well, you already did, actually.
That wasn't my question.
Yeah, no, you already...
Yeah, I also got to sign an additional three minutes.
Yes. So you have talked to us, I think, for almost seven, so we appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. I didn't, I just didn't get the testimony. I didn't, more testimony. Thank you for that.
Yeah. Okay. Now, we have the ordinance before us. Mr. Sullivan, your comments.
Yeah, several things. Mr. Hunt, I've read some of the stuff that Mr. Hunt has written. He is currently involved in a case in municipal court, as I understand it, and he's currently given us a notice of claim over the old policy. And one of the reasons for this ordinance is to deal with the old policy and to make it clear what the policy of the city is. I have not undertaken the research, but Bill Kabeisman in my office has, and as the chief has indicated, the district attorney has reviewed it. I would not like to discuss the currently pending case. It is now being undertaken by a special city prosecutor, and I think any claims under that are in the past, and if the claim is made and the suit is made, we're going to deal with that. The question before the commission tonight is what should the policy be in the future? Mr. Hunt says that, well, he wants to correct the report, because there were laws before 1997 because of the constitutional provision. On the other hand, that's not a law, it's a case. It's a little thing, but I think it makes the point. There isn't any statutory law that occurred before 1997. The second thing is, there's a federal court issue. There are two cases that he cites. We will review them, and we will have a report back to you by your next reading of the ordinance, should you choose to pass this ordinance for first reading. I believe that Mr. Kabeisman has read the cases, and I believe he's already responded to them. Nevertheless, I want to make sure that you're informed. The third thing is the relationship of state law and the Fourth Amendment. If there's a Fourth Amendment issue that extends beyond state law, we'll deal with it in the current case. And if the police department was wrong in the search that was made, then the municipal court will find it, or some appellate court will find it. On the policy change, or the, sorry, the use of police officer of Oregon City, I believe we looked at that and deliberately decided to recommend to you that it be a police officer rather than some other enforcement officer. Something that important should probably have a police officer involved, who has the training to deal with Fourth Amendment kinds of issues. So we made a deliberate determination there. And again, what happened in the past, what happened with West Lynn, is probably not relevant to the decision that you have to make tonight on what your policy should be in the future. And on the value issue, you know, police officers, God bless them, have to make lots of horseback determinations that may or may not prove to be correct in the artificial lighting and the temperature control courtroom. They have to make them regardless of what anybody says. Here, we've tried to reduce the discretion as much as possible, so that we have a fair policy that you can use. If you wanted to make it, calling it an appraiser at the time of the seizure, that's probably not practical, and you're probably never going to have any inventorying done. We made our best shot at the policy. We ask you to consider this for first reading. We will look at both the testimony and the materials submitted by Mr. Hunt, and we'll have a memo to you and Mr. Hunt by the time of second reading, and you can make your determination of whether or not you want to proceed.
Commissioner Nacita?
I have a question. Is the fact that we're reviewing this ordinance change kind of a result of Mr. Hunt's either litigation or activism on the issue?
I think it has something to do with it, yes.
Okay. Now, secondly, I'm wondering, just as far as our process...
Sure.
When we have a first reading, and we vote to approve it and send it to a second reading, we can make amendments if we so choose to?
Absolutely.
At the second reading?
Absolutely.
And take public testimony.
So what I'm wondering is, and I'm asking Mr. Sullivan, as to what your and Mr. Kabeisman's timelines are, do we have a work session between this meeting and the time we would...
On the 10th.
Okay. Would it be possible to get that memo by the 10th?
Sure.
So we could put this, add this to the work session agenda?
Yes. And that memo will be a public record, and if you want to take testimony then or at the second reading, you can do that.
So Mr. Hunt could join us at the work session if he so chose and talk about it?
If you wish to open it up, that's fine.
Okay.
We normally don't take testimony at work sessions unless invited.
That's your choice.
But we can determine whether we wish to.
I actually, I actually would like to open, I would like to put this on a work session item between the first reading and the second reading, and I would like to have Mr. Hunt there to chat about it, and Chief Conrad there as well, or a representative from the police department.
You know, I'd like to also reiterate that our policies are, meet state and national accreditation standards. We're the first law enforcement agency in Clackamas County to become state accredited. And this policy has been reviewed by the assessors who come out and do our accreditation process. We've had this policy reviewed by Mr. Kabeisman. It's been looked at by the district attorney's office, and all those entities find it in compliance with state law, and a policy that does meet those accreditation standards.
Thank you. Is there a motion for, a motion on this ordinance?
I'll move for first, well, let me ask you a question.
Commissioner Neely?
I can move for the first reading without making reference to the rescinding. I would come on the second reading. So I'll move for first reading of ordinance 09100. 1,000. 1,000, thank you.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner West. Is there further comment or discussion? Seeing none, Nancy, the vote, please.
Wait, I need to read.
Oh, for the first reading, Mr. Sullivan.
This is ordinance 09-1,000, an ordinance of the city of Oregon City rescinding ordinance number 97-1,000 and adopting a new ordinance regarding inventory searches.
Thank you. Now, the vote, please, Nancy.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nacita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0.
So would it require a motion to place this item on the agenda of the work session?
Nope, it's done.
Let me ask this question, though, before...
Let me ask this question, though, before you do that. This is an issue that is before the courts at the present time. Do you want to jump in the middle of this before they decide what the outcome is?
Madam Mayor, it's not, I do not have a case before the court. This was misspoken on part of Mr. Sullivan, so to the extent that may affect your decisions, I just wanted to, I've been waiting to clarify this. He's completely incorrect. I do not have a case pending in municipal court. I do not have any lawsuits filed. My case was resolved when my motion to suppress was granted a year ago.
Mr. Hunt, thank you. Let's let the attorneys work this out, and if it's appropriate for us to discuss that in Mr. Hunt's presence, fine, and if it is not...
Okay, the way I'd like to work it is to have it as part of the agenda of the work session and work out between now and the work session whether in fact we want to have open testimony or anything, but I do, I would like it as a work session item.
Okay. Is that okay with everybody? All right, thank you. Next, let's move into our next item, which is personal services agreement, four, our very important projects on I-213, I-205, a bridge to Abernathy Creek Tributary, the jug handle improvements, Phase One final design services with Obeck Consulting Engineers. Nancy Crashour, Public Works Director and City Engineer.
Good evening, Mayor Norris and City Commissioners. I'm asking you tonight to approve an personal services agreement with Obeck Consulting Engineers. This would be for Phase One final engineering services. We are wading into this project carefully because we don't have full funding at this time, but we are working very hard to get full funding for the design and construction through the economic stimulus package. We do feel that even if we didn't get complete funding for even a number of years, going through this process and spending this money now is productive. It's not something that would expire within the timeframe that we would hopefully find funding if it wasn't through economic stimulus. So we, what, this is, this is time sensitive. If we can get the consultants going on the elements that are required to meet ODOT's requirement for the design acceptance package by ODOT, then it makes it much more ready for spending of federal dollars, which at this point, it looks as though there will be a timeframe in terms of how fast we need to spend the economic stimulus dollars. We've got a commitment from this project team that they are ready to go, and other than positioning us, again, like I said, for the economic stimulus dollars, it is a good step just to continue to move this project forward. The farther along it gets, the more desirable, the more...
Shovel ready.
Ready, the more ready it gets, and it also allows people throughout the region and the state that this is a real project. And then, of course, I would be remiss to add that we do feel that this, funding for this project was truly a gap when we were trying to put the rivers agreement together. Pursuing this federal stimulus funding, we think is appropriate, not only because, gosh, it would be great to get this very, very well-designed, fairly innovative improvement to that interchange done, not only for Oregon City but for the region. We all know that 40%, 45% of the traffic doesn't come to Oregon City, it goes through Oregon City that uses this interchange. I believe this is the second busiest interchange on I-205, the first being I-84. So the other thing I wanted to add, that should this project go forward, it'll be much easier to fill the gap for the rivers project in the future. And that then makes this project a fantastic candidate for economic stimulus funding because in addition to the jobs that it would create for the construction of the project and the design of the project, and all of the materials that you used in the project, it also would stimulate, it would also help trigger the development of the rivers. And for that project, we're seeing, we're looking at 305 construction jobs and over 1,600 permanent jobs. The other thing that the manager and I have struggled with with this project is, well, gosh, what if some, what if the landfill doesn't develop? Well, we see this project as really a key in terms of providing transportation facilities to growth in our Park Place concept plan area, as well as our Beaver Creek Road concept plan area. So moving this project forward is important, not only for the regional center, but it's also important for the 2040 metro region, the urban growth boundary expansion area. And then, it also benefits our friends to the south that drive through town. So if you have any questions about the project or the contract, I'd be happy to answer them.
Madam Mayor, if I could...
Yes, Mr. Patterson.
First of all, river without the rivers project, as you recall, the concept of the general...
Interchange. Presently, that interchange is at 95% capacity. In 2010, without the rivers, they're looking at that at being at 99% capacity. Even without Park Place or the Beaver Creek concept planned areas, if we're ever going to be able to develop the employment lands we now have within the city along Beaver Creek and around the college, is, we still have the bottleneck at 213, 205, it has to be addressed. That's why this improvement is essential for that type of development, if we can get that area shovel-ready as well.
Comments and discussion? Commissioner Neely?
When Phil Worth made his presentation to the city commission regarding the jug handle, I posed a question. I presume these streets that are on this map are conceptual, they're not to scale. They look like they're too big to be to scale compared to the other area. But I posed a question. We, we were told at one point that gaining, I'm going to say, northbound access on 213 from Holcomb from the east side of 213, that is, enabling traffic that wants to get northbound to get directly onto 213 without having to come up Redland Road to do so, whether it be possible to have a road that could eventually be tied into the jug handle to permit that to occur? Now, I don't, my question is, when they're looking at this, that was a question I posed, he answered, he didn't know.
Okay, yeah.
Because that wasn't his mandate. When we're looking at, when we're looking at this design, and I'm not asking for additional funds to be committed, but I would be curious of whether it would be possible to have another road actually come into the jug handle at a future, a future date.
Into the jug handle from where?
From Holcomb, on the east side of 213. Now, if there's that narrow, open area, that couldn't happen, but I don't think these roads are to scale. I think they're conceptual.
Could you show me on the map, please, Commissioner? I mean, hold up your drawing.
Yeah. The jug handle, if I may, is going to do, is going to do something like this on this side, right? I'm overdrawing it. Right?
Yeah, I can't see it, but it doesn't quite go to Apperson, it actually goes by the railroad tracks.
I understand.
By Clackamas River Drive.
Okay. Whether it be possible to have northbound 213 traffic come through here and come into the jug handle.
We can look at that.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
Sure, no problem.
Other questions? Commissioner Smith?
Well, one comment about the map. I know I've seen the plan or some, at some point, drawings of the jug handle, but it's not here, and so when I was trying to visualize any of it, I just couldn't. So, I mean, I know where the intersections are and all of that, and that's really all this map shows. So as a really, really visual person, I hope that in the future we get more, because I have to see it.
I would be happy to...
Because reading the paragraphs just don't do it.
I would be happy to get you a copy of that tomorrow.
Thank you.
Commissioner West?
Rocky, I just love it that you talk about being visual. It is, I ask for graphs, flow charts. I'm such a, a picture says a thousand words, so I'm supportive of that. And I'm also supportive of getting this project done, whether we get this in the economic stimulus or not, because it's just so crucial to the development of Oregon City and the offering of jobs. And also, I didn't mention it, a previous urban renewal commission, but what we hear a lot from the economic development consultants is positioning ourselves for coming out of this recession. So anything we can do to be ready when we're, when it's over, that is a good thing, in my opinion.
Yep, our number one transportation project.
And one more comment. Speaking of visual, I love page 45 with all your acronyms. I should just keep this, I should keep it right here at my desk.
Pin it up, yeah. Good idea.
Your ODOT ones, so thank you.
I think my microphone's not working. Is my microphone up there? It is. Commissioner Nacita?
Okay, I have a couple of comments on this. First, on the budget, this is not coming out of Oregon City funds, but through Clackamas County funds?
That is correct. When the Clackamas County Red Soils Campus was approved, their master plan, they were required to make a payment for Highway 213 improvements to mitigate their impacts on Highway 213. And so I think for what we considered the most productive use of those funds would be down there on Highway 213, between Redland and I-205, there was approximately $3.5 million that was for their traffic mitigation.
Okay.
Rather than them doing any improvements and paying the whole full meal deal.
Well, I'd like to make some big-picture comments about this. I was very open during my campaign about the fact that I don't think the rivers is in the best interest of Oregon City, and, but I do agree that irrespective of the rivers project, 213 is a problematic highway. And there, you know, are safety issues to be addressed, as well as congestion issues. I'm very glad that this is county funding because, I mean, people way out of Oregon City use 213, and it's just an equity issue that, you know, people out of county use the funding. If we're going to consider this jug handle project, that, you know, the county as a whole contribute to even the engineering parts of this. I'd like to raise another issue there, another what I consider a big-picture issue, too. And it kind of relates to our goal one up there on the wall, build a sustainable future. I kind of don't like the word sustainability because it means, it's one of those words that is used by everybody for whatever purposes, you know, they're trying to advance. Sustainability means something to everybody. My particular view of sustainability has to do with restoration of ecosystems, as critical to human life, I mean, our global ecosystem, our atmosphere being the most key example. And ecosystems degrade over a long time, and to restore ecosystems, you have to take a very long-term view that's going to last beyond all of our lifetimes. This area is what was, used to be called the Clackamas Bottomlands. It was a very large, very highly productive wetland ecosystem with extremely important flood retention and habitat function, and over a century, it's been degraded. It's been filled, we've, you know, the 405, 213 filling to create these travel lanes have killed it off.
The garbage.
The garbage dumps, coring it out, the Oregon City shopping center fill. You can only see vestiges of that ecosystem, maybe as you're going off, you know, 205 onto 213 on the side there. And when I think of the long-term view it takes to restore large, important ecosystems, and I just want to start this discussion rolling, and this is as good as any other place to do it, I look at projects like this in the context of can we use this as an opportunity to make even smaller incremental restoration of a significant ecosystem? Engineering can do that. If something like this can be designed, for example, so it doesn't necessarily involve a lot of fill for new construction, or, you know, it can actually reduce the amount of fill that's in there so we can lower the flood elevation, for example, I think we should do that. And I'm not going to, I know this has been, you know, in the works for a long time, and I don't want to, you know, throw it off the rails or anything. But in moving forward on the jug handle and all of our other projects, I want us to start keeping in mind how we, when we decide on engineering projects or development projects, use those as opportunities to, you know, ameliorate decision by decision, a very large-scale ecosystem, just as it took 100 years of individual decisions to really screw it up like it's been screwed up. So that's the comment I'll make on that.
I, it's nice that we have common goals, Commissioner. One of the items on this particular project that we're going to be looking at is, we will not be able to have more cut than fill, but, but what we are going to be looking at is doing some restoration on the wetlands between I-205 and the railroad tracks. I mean, I think there's an area where we can do enough enhancement of the wetlands where we have a positive impact on the flood plain, so you can look for that small project.
Will this jug handle involve additional fill?
We haven't done the...
As opposed to what exists there now?
This is a project that we haven't gotten to the final design. This is what the design acceptance package will get us to in terms of the alignments, and so I can't answer that question, but our goal is to balance the cut and fill on the flood plain.
Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, we have a motion. This is an action item this evening.
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner West?
I offer, or I move to authorize the city manager to execute the PSA with Obeck Consulting Engineers to provide Phase One final design engineering services for OR 213-I-205 Bridge to Abernathy Creek Tributary Jug Handle Improvements Project.
Moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Neely. On the motion, is there any further comments? Seeing none, Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nacita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. That concludes our business agenda, except for the consent agenda, which is just minutes from January 9th. We have a motion for adoption.
No, no, it's just a speed measure.
Oh.
Speed measure, oh, I only wish.
Oh, I do have a page there.
Yeah, maybe you should...
There you go. It's only been an hour. Okay, resolution number 9-03. Well, it's only five things, which is vacation of a non-vehicular access, non-vehicular access strips that front lots 142 through 179 of Sequoia Landing subdivision. And Nancy, this is one of yours also.
Correct, and we brought this to you at your last meeting, and there were some questions about what were the procedures for changing the location of the alleys. And we, I got some clarification from our planners, and then we also have Mr. Mike Harn here from Sequoia Development, and I think it would be a good idea for you to hear from him. What this is, just again, is to vacate some non-vehicular access strips along the frontage of homes that were to have been, have the alley in the back, so you couldn't have driveways. The non-vehicular access strip meant that you couldn't drive a car across the property line. So we have vacated those so that they can have frontage with a driveway. And it's up to you if you want to hear, and we also consulted with our legal staff, and I think there was, there was agreement that what had occurred at the planning level was fine in terms of process, and also even the conditions of approval were written, so there was a fair amount of discretion in where the alleys were finally placed and how the residences were, or where the driveways were going to be, either in the front or the back.
Okay, I think that there's interest on the commission to hear from, about the development and...
I had colored and maps saying sustainability one time.
Well, we actually have it a goal, so feel free to say it. Well, we actually have it a goal, so feel free to say it.
Just to kind of give you an outline of what I.
Please introduce yourself again.
I'm Michael Harn, I'm the Vice President of Sequoia Custom Homes. We are the property developer for the Sequoia Landing subdivision that we're talking about. The smaller pages that I gave you were to address the two additional parks that kind of came up in question last week, because when I read the minutes that you guys had, the next pages addressed the new blueprints or the front elevations of the front-loaded garage plans that we would be talking about replacing on the island that is Coast Redwood Avenue, Tanner, Scarlet Oak, and Sunstone Place. Other than that, I can answer the questions as you have.
Okay. Commissioner West, do you want to begin?
Well, I had gone out there to look at it. So, basically, if you're removing the alley and building curb cutouts in the front, so you're just putting the houses closer together in the middle, and are they going to back-to-back? Or are they going to have backyards, or?
They'll have backyards.
Okay, they'll have backyards.
Yeah, they'll have an 18-foot driveway on the front.
Yeah, so, got it.
So, from a parking space standpoint, we have the exact same amount.
Yes, exactly.
I just would like to add that from the plan, the land use decision for this, the point of having alleys was to keep the driveways off of Myers Road and Glen Oak Road. So, that was the intent of the development as a whole, and that's why there was some discretion left in where the alleys finally ended up.
Thank you. Other questions? Make a motion.
I have a question.
Okay, Commissioner Smith?
So, how did the change from the frontage from the back into the front, or the driveway, affect the design of the buildings?
Did you question, why did we change it, or how does it affect the?
Well, I guess both.
We also own Sequoia Crossing, a subdivision right down the street.
Right.
With 92 lots, that we kept 44 of, sold the remaining ones. And 44 of those units that were ours are alley-loaded units. The remaining units, the 52 units that were built by two other home builders, are front-loaded units. When we were trying to sell those units, the conversation was about half of the people that were in there, the reason that they wanted a front-loaded unit was because they had a dog and wanted a backyard, or they wanted to have the ability to entertain in the back. So, for us, what we looked at was trying to now have a subdivision that has a mix of both. I mean, the subdivision still has 124 alley-loaded units out of the 193 townhome units. So, realistically, we have 68 front-loaded units right now. We're adding 38, as we proposed. So, it's not a situation where the overall feel of the subdivision, I think, will change.
Okay. I don't, just by driving through there and seeing the difference between the units that have front access versus the units that have rear access, there's a huge difference in the way that those look. And so, that was one of the reasons I was curious.
One other thing about the two-story units that are going, you know, that we want to build on that island, the ones that you've seen out there that are front-loaded are a three-story unit. These units are a two-story unit. So, I don't think that the change will be anywhere near as great. I certainly understand what you're saying, but, you know, there's a massive change between the two-story and the three-story.
Further questions?
I'd just like to make a comment.
I do think that this change will significantly change the character of the neighborhood, and
I'm not convinced that we should be undertaking or enabling such a change, and I'm going to recommend a no vote.
So, your purpose, I mean, I'm not trying, it will change the neighborhood.
The front-loading of the houses with street access compared to what's across the street, I think, will cause a very significant imbalance architecturally and from a design standpoint.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Just one more. How does, the other concern that I had is from an emergency, police-fire point of view in the sense that, well, and also traffic. The one concern was if, with the middle access in between, you're taking a lot of traffic off of the street, the main streets, because the cars are going through in between the buildings. And I think it also, having access to the front of the building adds to the access and parking other cars in the front of the building as, you know, it leads to that, or it's more accessible, I guess. But the other, the emergency issue is the question, I mean, you're eliminating a whole other access that might be used in the event of a fire, or police, or any of those kind of things. I don't know if that's, is that an issue with staff, or?
Nancy, which one of you?
In terms of fire, we, I believe we have adequate locations of fire hydrants, so we wouldn't need to have access along the alley.
Hydrants and the width of streets, are really two of those factors we look at?
That's correct.
Well, and I think that the part of it was, you know, if you're pulling in and out of your driveway every day, and some people, we've talked, you know, don't use their garage for driveways, which means they're going to park on the street rather than in between the two buildings. And that then affects fire trucks getting through on the streets where there wouldn't normally be a car if they're going into the back. So, I think those are all kind of tied together.
Just, there is an issue with that. The alleys right now, the way that they were designed, are not big enough to have you park behind them.
To park.
So, from an access standpoint, an additional parking on the road, in this case, we've actually given an additional parking space off the road, if you, to use your logic, that not everyone parks in a garage, which I agree with.
Okay, very good, thank you.
And also, just to reassure you, we have the Fire Marshal review all of these plots, as well as, of course, our building official reviews it for the fire at the time of building permit.
Yes, Commissioner West?
Can I make a motion for two items? Or they have to be separate?
They need to be separate.
They're together project. Okay, I move to approve and adopt Resolution Number 09-03 to vacate the non-vehiculars access strips in Eastman's fronting lots 142 through and including Lot 179 of the Sequoia Landing subdivision.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Neely. Is there further comment or discussion? Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Commissioner Nocita?
No.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes three-two. Next, we have Item 9-04, which is a resolution to vacate.
That would be the storm drainage easement.
Yes, between.
Where the alley would have been previously.
Okay, so it's a related project. Do you want to comment on this one?
I don't have anything else to add. What's going to happen behind there is the storm drainage system back there will be privately maintained.
Okay. Any other questions? May I have a motion, please?
Doug?
I'm going to have a point of discussion.
Oh, all right. So, I move to approve and adopt Resolution Number 09-04 to vacate the public access easement, and the storm drainage easement located along the rear lots of 142 through and including Lot 179 of the Sequoia Landing subdivision.
I'll second for discussion.
Moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Neely, and now discussion, please.
I got a little confused that Nancy didn't end up with her sentence, half of it the way it came. Privately maintain storm drainage. I presume the storm drainage easement was put in there because you're going to have a hard surface that's going to shed water off of that alleyway. Is that not right?
That's true, and also it would provide access for maintenance.
Right.
And to be honest with you, I haven't looked at if they indeed have, where their roof drains are going in this particular situation. If they're going to the street, then they would be going to the roadway, which is in our right-of-way.
Right.
So, maybe, I don't know if you have information.
But the only reason I was going to say.
Have you changed the storm drainage design?
The original plan, the storm line that you're talking about, was strictly to drain the alley.
Right. And that's what I would have.
So, we don't need these?
Yes.
Okay. Further questions? Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Commissioner Nocita?
No.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes three-two. The next item of business, thank you, is personal services agreement for our municipal elevator staffing services. Let's see, this is also one that we talked about last week, or like, two months, or two weeks ago, fairly extensively, and had a couple of questions about. So, Nancy, pressure.
That's correct. And we had, we publicly advertised the staffing contract for the elevator and received one contract, that being to five stars. And they have provided our municipal elevator staffing services for years and years and years. I got the history of the contracts back to 1996 so that I could let you know approximately what kind of increase we're looking at this year. And this year, the value per year, and that'll be each year out of the three-year contract, so it's not going to increase each year, that will be $91,000, as you see in your report. Previous year, it was $75,240. So, this represents a 22% increase in this particular contract from the last three-year contract. Prior to that, the annual contract was $66,668. So, between that one, which was back in '02 through '05, and the one through '05 and '08, there was a 13% increase. Prior to the 2002-05 contract, we had the 1999-2002 contract, and that was for an annual amount of $62,438. So, the following contract was increased by about 7%. And keep in mind that those are three-year contracts. And then, prior to that, back in 1996 to 99, the annual amount was $46,602. So, over 15 years, the average annual, I didn't have a chance to get it done with, if you figured it per year of increase, so I just took the average increase, ends up being about 6.27%, and that's over 15 years. So, it's really an opinion whether or not that is a excessive increase or not. I do want to say that the, this particular contractor provides really great, very reliable service to the city. And I think, given the number of hours of operation and management of that kind of a staff type, it really is, in my opinion, it's a good value, even at the $91,000 per year. Again, it's certainly, it's anybody's opinion on the value.
I would guess it's accounted about 6% a year over those three years.
I bet you're right. That's right. Yeah, exactly.
Well, no, that's what you're talking about, though. I mean, when we look at things normally in terms of our, of our general living, how much was it from one year to the other? And 6% does not seem at all unreasonable to me.
So, hopefully, that provides all the information you needed to.
I think that was the missing piece.
Understand where we're at in this contract. And this would be a three-year contract for the next three years.
I've never heard anybody complain about the people that are operating those elevators that are all highly personable. There's only one time that I think there was a failure to somebody get there on time, some communication fell out, and a replacement didn't come in when a person wasn't there. But they do a great job.
And they also provide housekeeping services there and let us know if there's something broken that needs maintenance, or, they communicate well with our staff as well.
Actually, years ago, we did have many, or at least, I heard many complaints about the elevator and their staffing, you know, 10 years ago or so. And I just have heard none in recent times. So, I think they're a really good agency. Is there further comment or discussion?
Nope.
Not Nancy, the vote, please. Oh, have we had a motion? We have not. Let's have that first, please.
I'll move that we approve the, approve?
Authorize.
Authorize, I'm sorry. The city manager to execute a personal services agreement in the amount of $274,407.9 with five stars international to provide staffing services for municipal elevator.
Moved by Commissioner Nocita, seconded by Commissioner Smith. For the comment? Yes, Commissioner West?
Well, Doug, I wasn't really teasing you. I was thanking you for breaking my three-year down to a one-year increment for me.
I never apologize for comments I make to you. Why do you want to apologize for comments you make to me?
With that, Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
I think you for.
Aye. Motion passed five-zero. Thank you. Okay, moving along then to the personal services agreement. 2008-9 Waterline Replacements Project Design and Construction Administration Services to Wallace Engineering. Nancy, pressure.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor and City Commissioners. We have sought proposals from two of the engineering consultants on our, on the city commission's pre-qualified list of civil engineering consultants to give, to provide a work scope and fee estimate for our 2008-09 waterline replacements. As you know, we have annual waterline replacements. They're in our master plan, as well as in our budget, and the report specifies which waterlines we will be replacing this year. These are still predominantly based on fire flows. And then, there are also a couple of lines that our public works crews find to be especially troublesome, and so we're adding a couple of those to this project, all within the budget that was approved last July, last June. And we, based on the proposals, the work scopes, and indeed, the fee estimate, and the, I guess I would say that the quality of the proposal and the project team that was submitted to us, we chose Wallace Engineering to do the work, and I would ask that you approve their personal services agreement. It's for about, it's for about $98,000. It's for both the design and construction engineering services.
And this money does not come out of the general fund?
No, this, in fact, this, these particular waterlines are all out of the water fund. Oftentimes, we'll have ones that are being upsized that come out of the water fund and water system development charges. But in this case, these are all areas where it's not an upsizing for growth, it's because of fire flows in older parts of town.
Thank you. Questions or comments or a motion? Commissioner West?
Another question. So, the van with the camera does not do water lines. It does sewer or storm drain?
That's right.
Oh, okay. So, this is on a CIP that you're just replacing and upsizing.
That's right.
Okay.
Further comments or a motion?
I moved authorize the city manager to execute the personal services agreement with Wallace Engineering for, is that the $98,292?
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner West. Any further discussion? Nancy, please, the vote.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes five-zero. Last item of, under general business. The minutes of.
Move approval.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner West.
You can't rock.
Oh.
What is it for?
He can.
It is. It's for the minutes. Yeah. It's the minutes of November 5th.
But it was for the retreat.
Nope, that's coming up. Okay, now, on the minutes for November 5th, motion by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Neely. Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Epstein.
Commissioner Nocita?
Epstein.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes three-zero with two abstentions.
Well, he probably could have seconded it. He just couldn't vote it out.
Right, he could have seconded it.
Oh, sorry, Robert.
Well, we're wrong about this, can we go back?
And in, and in Robert's Rules of Order, actually, people who are not in attendance at a meeting may second the minutes, but it is our tradition that we do it that way. So, it is not illegal to do it the other way.
I want to mention, there probably will be a day when you can send a camera down water pipes, but you can't do it now.
We use sounders to detect leaks, but we don't, yeah, you're right, we don't have a submersible camera.
Not yet, okay.
But you have to put it under pressure.
Yeah, exactly.
The consent agenda, we have the minutes of our retreat. May I have a motion for adoption?
Move approval.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Smith. On the consent agenda, Nancy, please poll the commission.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes five-zero. Next, it's time for our communications, and we'll begin with the city manager, Mr. Patterson.
Madam Mayor, I have nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. Um, I have a couple of things this evening, and I know some of you will for the committees that you, that you represent, and I think it's important that you bring, you know, when you have things at your committee that, that we need to know, because it helps us in understanding what's going on, that's important to bring those items to it. Um, you probably all got an email about the IMPAC workshop, the federal policy advisory committee. Doug and I sit on that, that committee, and this is open to all of you, if you, it's from one to six next Wednesday. Uh, if you want to come for lunch at twelve-thirty, that's also provided. So, um, it's on the website, but I have, the, the form is here, so if you'd like to look at the address, you may do that. Want to do that? Anyone need it? All right, who's going? Are you going? I will be going. Anyone else? But you're welcome, welcome to consider going, it will really give, um, it's designed to give you information about the land use process, about urban and rural reserves particularly, and all of the, uh, decision-making that the region is going through in these next several years. Secondly, um, Scott Archer and I, last night, were invited to a meeting, sponsored by Metro, at which the concept that I've floated for you before, that when Mayor Daly came to town and talked about connecting green, which is an attempt to, you know, when, when our citizens go to a park, they don't know whether they're in Tuautin, Tigered, or a special district, they just know that they're in a park. And this is an attempt by the, by the region, being led by Metro, to do inter-agency coordination, so that it might have joint signage, there might be joint branding or marketing. We were shown last night some really, I thought, very nice-looking brochures from Minneapolis, from East Bay, uh, the, and from the city of Vancouver, who have such a linked system. So this was a first step, the parks directors had all met in a retreat, and kind of endorsed this idea, and then are beginning to roll it out now to electeds. So, um, there is a group that's, a task force that's working on it called Connecting, Connecting Green Alliance, I believe. Um, of course, we brought up things such as, well, if there's going to be a regional funding mechanism needed, which there might be, does, how does that impact us locally? Or how does that impact the region's ability to do, to do work? I think the attempt, you know, Metro has invested so much money, well, as have we, in buying parkland, which of course is a good thing, since we're not making new parkland, but we don't have the funds to operate it or develop them, and, um, that, or connect the missing pieces to the Emerald Necklace, or whatever our moniker might, might be. So anyway, you'll be hearing more about that, you might be even invited to some conversations about it, and we'll be talking about that. Scott, do you have anything else to add?
No, that's great.
Thank you. Um, next, um, I think I told all of you that I met with, that actually Congressman Schrader brought us, Kurt Schrader brought us all together, all of the cities and school districts and other people to talk about the federal stimulus package, which he prefers to call the American Recovery and Reinvestment Package.
I was wondering that when I saw that.
Yeah.
That was interesting. Is that the...
This is what was there several days ago. It's a floating target. Um, I think what he wanted us to know is that, that we need to be ready. So the, I, I commend our staff for putting together the packages in a succinct way and in a very understandable way, because we're, we're really, I think, a little bit ahead of the curve with having packages ready on multiple fronts. What he impressed upon us was make sure that we have the information, and secondly, the money from the federal government will likely come through the same pipelines that it already does, so we'll have to go through the same processes. So for instance, for us to be on the J-PAC list, the Joint Policy Advisory Committee on Transportation, or the state lists of whichever project, whether it's utilities or whatever, the money will likely come down in those forms, so that's really important to know. But if you'd like a copy of this, I can make, make them, I didn't do that, um, but I would be glad to do that. And, uh, I think that's the...
State of the Union Luncheon.
No, I'm not going to that. Uh, are there others?
You're speaking.
They're not going to it.
You're speaking.
It was already mentioned, so, I guess, are you going to talk about working one fifty?
Yeah, no, no, I was talking about one fifty, but...
Okay, I guess one more thing then is, um, the state, as you, as you heard tonight, turns one fifty on Saturday, and there are, um, and our community has a number of events again on OR, Oregon City, OR150.com. But what we have on Saturday is a free museum day, all of the house museums and other museums in the city.
The fourteenth, it's not this coming Saturday.
What did I say?
A week from Saturday.
The fourteenth, didn't I say that? Oh, Valentine's Day, which is also Oregon's birthday, and the fourteenth, we have our...
OC one fifty.
OC one fifty, yes, I'm, I've been, no, I've been with the OR one fifty all day, so it's very complicated. Um, and that, the, our trolleys will be running free to all of the museums, which will have special activities for that day, and it should be just a wonderful time to get the chance to see all of the museums of Oregon City, all, all dressed up for the Sesquicentennial. And then, again, check the website, we have many more activities happening, we have a, we'll actually be seeing new banners in the city, and I believe next Tuesday, we'll also roll out our one fifty things to do in Oregon City brochure, which looks fabulous, so I'm very excited to, to see that. So, next, other reports from other committees you serve on. Do you have one?
Yeah, just question, you said the, the stimulus package funds for infrastructure probably comes through with their normal channels.
Normal channels.
How long would that review take?
Yeah, well, that, that's what we impress upon Congressman Schroder, Schrader, I mean, I haven't had, I've, all that time writing that state of the city, um, too much time on my computer, um, that, um, we urged him to do any streamlining as possible, and he said that those are points of argument, about how quickly it'll get to us, but I think we should...
The idea was to quickly get the money out there.
Yes, I think that's an issue. So, do you have a report from IMPAC?
Yeah, uh, well, not a great one from IMPAC, other than it was a very informative, it was, uh, good information in terms of what could be done in terms of, um, metro development in the metro region, in terms of, in terms of lands and so forth. I did pull this one question for which the attorney that was speaking to us didn't have an answer, uh, talking about urban farmlands, and, uh, you know, he was talking about, well, depends what you mean, gardens, or do you mean community gardens and so forth, and I asked them whether jurisdiction would in fact, as part of its code, be able to declare, say, a, a, an area that comes into the general urban growth boundary, if the city felt it was a benefit to leave it in agriculture production, whether it could, it could declare it as industrial land. He did not indicate that that was not possible. So, I think there is flexibility when we have our urban growth expansions as to whether we could do such things, because agriculture is industry, and you have both, you got both production and processing components of it, so. Um, I wanted to talk about the, the, I also serve on the urban, uh, urban rural reserves policy advisory committee to the, to the county commission, and, uh, there have been no decisions in terms of rural reserves. The only area that's indicated this time that would not be a rural reserve, would maybe something that wouldn't even qualify as an urban reserve, that's adjacent to Oregon City, is the area next to the river along ninety-nine E, which shows no designations as being a rural reserve. We're going to be going into discussions about, uh, what constitutes a rural reserve. The staff person that was making the presentation feels that, uh, a sewer services ought to be a major component of it. Uh, it did show some interesting break lines for Oregon City in terms of where slopes change and so forth. I do believe that, at least within the periphery of Oregon City, we could serve areas in, in other watersheds that would not flow down to Oregon City, but they could be dealt with through, through pumping without a great cost, but, uh, it looks like that's something like Beaver Creek people are going to jump on right away, because actually the bounty between, between the, uh, our current, uh...
Urban growth boundary.
No, Coffield Creek watershed, uh, uh, boundary, and the next watershed boundary, uh, which is on the other side, the creek itself is on the other side of, uh, Enrisey Road from Oregon City, is in, is, is in a different watershed, so, we've all talked about whether we could, would want to expand the urban growth boundary to Enrisey, if that was the case, we would be in a different watershed, uh, that would go into Beaver Creek, and so downhill slope doesn't take it to any current sewer facilities, but of course we have pumping stations all over Oregon City, so, um, but that's the, that's the particular urban service that we were looking at in terms of capability to, for considerations of rural reserve designation.
Thank you. Others? Commissioner West?
I have a few things. I have one business thing, and then, um...
Do you have an exciting announcement about Main Street, by the, by any chance?
Well, I guess I do. Be the first breaking news, yeah. Main Street, we hired our first manager today, his name is Lloyd Purdy, he comes from Cortland, New York, a town, a town of around twenty thousand, so it's a similar background to, you know, Oregon City at thirty thousand, and, uh, he came with glowing reviews from his, uh, previous communities, so we're really looking forward to having him. He's already going to start Monday, February ninth.
I've invited him to our next city council meeting so we can meet him.
Wow, um, lots of enthusiasm and energy, and, of course, we wish him the best, and, um, so that's, that's exciting news from Main Street. Um, I also wanted to talk about the Oregon City Cleanup Day this year, and we're going to call it Slash Take Care of Oregon Day, our cleanup that's on Earth Day, is traditionally held on Earth Day in conjunction with SOL, but this year, we're going to piggyback with Oregon One Fifty and their birthday and, um, the state's birthday celebration and commemorate Take Care of Oregon Days, so how can we leave our community a little bit better of a place? So, um, Doug and some of us, or, or anybody in the audience too, actually, in the viewing audience, the last day to register your project with Nancy Bush and the city and SOL is going to be on a Friday, February twenty-fourth. So in other words, if we don't, if you don't designate a project and come forth as a team leader, um, well, that's what we need you to do for best organizing the event. We will have additional projects for the Take Care of Oregon Day down there, so, uh, feel free to join us if you don't have an identified project. Um, our next meeting date on that, if you care to join us, is at, um, Thursday, February twelfth, at the ten o'clock at the Pioneer Community Center. So, and I was just, another little thing I was on, I, I joined the, um, League of Oregon Cities Planning their, or their annual conference, and that'll be here in Portland this year on October first through the third, um, at the Doubletree.
Here in Portland?
I mean, come on, in the metro area, okay, clarification, in the Portland area, and, um, for those of you that are new, it'd be great if you could come. So what we're doing is planning what we want to get educated on, and what, where the needs are. So there's been two major themes, uh, that we're going to plan sessions around, and one is environmental issues with fish passage, watershed restoration, um, all kinds of green building and subsequent codes, and, um, along economic development lines with urban renewal and Main Streets. A lot of other communities in the state wishes they had their Main Street program, it sounds like, um, we're lucky, we've got, we've got a head start on it. So, that's, that's that. So if any input on that, or maybe staff has ideas, so, let me know. And the last thing I wanted to say is kind of business, though it's not an announcement, and that is, last year on Seventh Street, the, um, planters, we had hanging flower baskets, but the planters were never planted or, or done, and they looked terrible, it was really a, I, it was really an unfortunate thing, and I don't know if they got lost in the, um, what do I say, lost in the shuffle there between departments, whether it would be, um, Public Works doing it, or thinking, or somebody thinking the neighborhood association would do it, but anyway, they didn't get done. So this year, because it has not been budgeted for, for this summer, which is two thousand nine, I'm wondering, um, if it could come out of our urban renewal budget or our street fund, because if we've, we've gone to the expense to do all those beautiful things on Seventh Street with the garbage cans and the planters, and, but we, we need to provide the operating money or the, for the maintenance of them.
What about our grant programs? I think that would be more appropriate.
Well, but, no, well, let me tell you what they said on that, what, what I've heard from the neighborhood associations on the grant programs, because the grant programs are matching funds, and the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association goes after matching funds for the flower baskets, they did not feel that they could carry that load of, and they, they didn't feel they could find the match. Well, that's just my two cents from the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association today. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you.
No, no committee comments, but I have a couple, uh, things that I want to mention. Um, first of all, the designs for the Sesquicentennial first day cancellation that the students at Oregon City High School did, um, are now on display at the post office, and I think we're going to have them on display at the library, um, if I get my act together and get that to you. Um, and, um, the other thing, just to remind people again about the rally in Salem on the sixteenth, um, many of, um, the schools, um, school district is sending several buses. Um, also, I know that several of our local children churches are sending buses as well on that day, so you can contact, um, the school district and find out how to do that, I think. Um, the other one is, um, if you're not doing anything else on the fourteenth, which is a lot of things going on the fourteenth, um, but the, uh, there were several parents that were going to come tonight and make a, a comment to, to the commission about a fundraiser for the Oregon City High School grad party, um, which is on that evening as well, so you can contact, uh, the high school about that, if you're interested.
Thank you. Commissioner Nacita?
Uh, thank you. I would like to share a few thoughts tonight, um, basically on, um, open dialogue and discussion, and my, I guess, this is kind of my new commissioner education and adjustment progress report. Um, a cup, I've had some experiences over the past week or so, um, that have been, um, challenging for me as a new commissioner and my leadership and political style. Um, I'm very, um, strong on the idea of complete free exchange of information and open access to information, and I've talked about that in the past, and most people are familiar with it. Um, and since I've got on the commission, um, I kind of acted in that manner, and some, some incidences have arisen that I, I don't yet know how to respond to, and I'll share them with you. One has to do with email. Um, I, I have had, um, mostly people that supported me when I was a candidate email me with, you know, their ideas on, on city affairs, and I find a habit, maybe some of the other commissioners have, um, had similar experiences, that people will want to email me suggestions for policy or thoughts, et cetera, on my private email address about city affairs. And I have, uh, this has surprised me, um, I've, I've had to ask several people to please use my city address, um, and I'm kind of, I'm kind of surprised that people who actually were my supporters and knew I was advocating open government, um, use my private email addresses, I think under the assumption that it would shield such emails from disclosure.
No.
And I don't think that's the case, because the issue is not what email address you use, the issue of what creates a public record is, is, you know, has to do with, you know, what, what I'm doing to create city policy, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes.
Um, and so that's been quite interesting to me, and I didn't anticipate that. I've also run into an issue where, um, on land use planning issues, um, I've, you know, I want, I, I feel it's my duty to ask questions, talk to people, um, ask for information, want to submit information, and I had a very interesting conversation with planning staff about my wanting to add to the record on the Cove project, and I was warned about issues of bias and, you know, ex parte contact, et cetera, et cetera. And I was really, um, I was really surprised at the idea that the mere wanting to have information in a record, um, could be, which I think is, you know, to make a good decision, you need information, and the, the mere wanting information to be added to a public record on a land use approval process could somehow expose me as someone who might be reviewing that decision, um, and as an appellate body, um, might compromise me, and, and, and so I feel constrained in my, you know, what I feel is my personality about...
Welcome to the city commission. Welcome to government. Welcome to government.
Open government and the free exchange of ideas of, of having that kind of constraint put on me. Um, and then, um, this afternoon, I was really taken aback when I sat down at the, you know, the, at the Urban Renewal Commission meeting, um, um, what transpired with my, um, free-form email on the idea of, you know, adding Park Place Elementary, um, uh, into the Urban Renewal District. So, I'd like to, you know, publicly apologize, um, for what I, I, I realize now was quite , um, importunate on, on some staff. And, um, that's a surprise to me. But I have to say too, um, that's, I see a tension developing, but I, I think I can assure you, I, I probably will resist as much as I can. Um, any self-regulation on what I see is, is extremely important. I am one to have very open discussion amongst the widest audience as possible because of the way I see, the way ideas work, is you float an idea, gets criticized, the broader the exchange is, the more good minds come into play to say, "I never thought of that. I disagree with it," but you, you inspire another idea, you know, now that you've brought that up and this whole kind of like spreading out and working of the, you know, the process, you know, leads to good decisions, I think. I'm not one to kind of huddle within, you know, a city commission and raise an idea and say, "What do you guys think of this?" And if you guys say, "No," I'm, you know, I'm going to restrain myself. Um, I think a discussion has to be open, wide and broad, and quite frankly, I don't know how I, I'm going to adjust to this tension, but I do want to be honest and, and, you know, upfront with everybody that that's my style. It didn't develop overnight. People's styles develop over years of experiences and what their convictions are, and this is where I am on, on that kind of, on dialogue. And I, I, I want everybody's good faith in, in trying to find that right balance. Um, you know, like I said, since I've been sworn in, I've had all of these different experiences that, that really have put me through a little bit of a ring.
You'll have more.
I know I will. I know I will. And, and so I just want to ask for everybody's patience on that. Um, and I do want to invite also, um, I do want to invite being criticized by everybody, myself, because I'm not immune to criticism and, you know, even...
Oh, don't, you will get criticism.
Even, even staff, you know, I don't, I don't think someone in city staff, from the city manager on down, I don't think people lose their rights to speech because they work for a city government. I mean, if someone calls up Dan Drantlaw and say, "What do you think of that idea that Nocita proposed?" I mean, I hope Dan wouldn't say, "Well, Nocita's an idiot." But I would hope Dan would be free to say, "I do agree with that idea for these reasons." Like, you know, city manager Patterson did, you know, laying down X, Y, and Z. I thought that was very helpful. Um, I, I will share with city manager Patterson that I don't think those points necessarily end the story for me on that particular idea, but I very much appreciate the comments and the critiques that I've gotten from him and many, many, many other people, um, on that, 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 that idea. But that's the process for me, and I, you know, I want people to know that that is my style of being open and, and very freewheeling about launching ideas, about discussing ideas, and, and want an exchange of ideas, um, because that's where I think good policy comes from. And it, it's been very bumpy since, you know, over, over the past two and a half weeks, and I don't think in the near term it'll get let, any less bumpy, and I'm, you know, really, um, if people can help me out on finding that balance, I'll really be appreciative. Thanks.
I don't, I, I guess, maybe you're a little overly concerned. Uh, first of all, I think bringing up, bringing any of those issues up to us as a body, either at a study session, asking for a study session...
It's appropriate.
Is one of the best ways to do it. I will give a couple instances with, uh, former commission. We had a case where certain people were putting forward their own agenda among two or three, uh, uh, of the members of the commission, brought it forward without any dialogue occurring beforehand, attempts in one case to try to put a motion forward, uh, before two of us ever heard about the thing that was being put forward. We also had a case of a mayor that went to the executive, when they had an executive, uh, president of Metro, was elected position, wanting to change, uh, the Oregon City's regional center designation to a town center designation without ever having to come to the commission body to do so. And I think my concern is if you've got two or three people kind of setting an agenda they want to bring forward rather than the idea being brought forward to the whole commission. I think that would be the greatest concern.
Yeah.
I think, I mean, if you're asking staff a question, uh, and it, the research is going to be kind of costly to deal with it, I think staff should first of all state that this is going to take ver, a lot of time on our part to answer the question, and then probably bring it up to, to a study session at that time to see if this is something majority of the commission wants to explore. I think that's probably one of the easiest ways to deal with it.
And I, I think on the incident today, there was, there was confusion, and I didn't think that my email...
Yeah.
By its own terms was asking any staff to do any research.
Well, actually, that's where I think you will learn, that the first, perhaps, I mean, I, I believe that open government means openness with all of us, and our major resource, the way we get things done in our community is staff. And so, if, that should really be the first stop. Um, you don't have to agree with them, you don't have to take their advice, but, um, if you're vetting something, often that's the first place to vet it because it'll help you create a better product. Now, I value more than anything, open dialogue here. It's where we should have robust debate as we work towards a decision using all the resources we have available. But I think you'll learn that you have a new hat now that you wear, and people vest, invest in, they see you with more power than you have. And so therefore, as you speak now, you are always a commissioner. And as you say, "I will do something," that becomes a promise. And so, it's, it's, um, I think you're good to get this in your first week here, um, your first month of, of, in office, to be able to understand the, the tensions that, that we all have. I mean, I, I think we all seek public comment and dialogue because that's how we develop our ideas, and, um, you'll learn as you go along.
He's, he has started his second month in office.
Yes, I believe that's true. Yes.
Just, just to follow up on that, and again, I think, you know, if we could visit, I might be able to help you a little bit about how to proceed with that. You have to understand the events that were created over the last few days. It was not just a dialogue...
Right.
That ended up between citizens. Those citizens began to put pressure on the school district, who were calling me saying, "Is this a viable solution?" Though I had some ideas of how this worked, at that point, I had to have an answer verbatim because I've got a city commissioner who's out there saying, "We should consider this." Uh, the other issue that becomes, that all of us are coming upon, it, it, if we can't do something, but one of you's saying you can do it, it puts everyone else in a very awkward position because it looks like they're the bad guys. Because a lot of folks are never going to hear the answer that there's a legal problem here. It also, when it gets finally back to that, it makes you lose credibility because you led folks down a path that has a legal problem to it. So, you've got to kind of figure out how to do it. Now, that's not to say that you can't say, "Maybe we ought to change the law." That's a whole different discussion. But before I leave, and I know Ed has some comments on this too, on the land use issue, and it's been my soapbox since I've been in Oregon, is I think it is the, I think what Oregon land use asks a city council to do is sort of coo, two constitutional roles, as a representative and as a judge, and I don't think you can do that. I think it is one of the problems. That's why I have advocated that maybe you should consider a hearings officer or some program like that, because it takes you out of getting information, it really takes you out of a conversation with citizens, and it takes you out of directing how the city should develop because you cannot be involved in it. You've got to sit back and be a judge if it comes to you. Now, I know Ed sees that somewhat different, but I've seen councils voted out of office for that very reason on a consistent basis, because when land use gets to a high level and you won't talk to them because it may come to you on appeal, you're going to have nothing but unhappy campers out there, so.
Mr. Sullivan?
Well, there's two, uh, separate things that I just want to just mention. Uh, the first is, uh, as I think Commissioner Nocita said correctly, um, everything you put on your own emails regarding city policy is probably discoverable with a, uh, a request for public records. Um, and it doesn't matter which email account it's on. I think Commissioner Nocita, um, underscores something that I, I think I've been trying to make, uh, the commission aware of for, for years. Uh, the city of Beaverton, of course, paid out more than a half a million dollars to deal with that very issue, uh, because the commissioners' individual, uh, laptops were, uh, by court order, uh, reviewed for, uh, information. I think all that's a matter of common sense. The other thing that is floating around the city attorney's, um, websites are, can you have a meeting virtually if you have three commissioners out of the five, uh, making an agreement, uh, by email? And without notice, because public meetings require notice, uh, I think that, there's no case right now on it, but, uh, the conservatives among us think that, uh, that's probably a public meeting which requires notice and which sets off the possibility of attorney's fees if somebody wants to, to push it. The other thing, and, and I take Commissioner Nocita's, uh, points, uh, but there is a difference, as I think everybody else has said, between being a policymaker, which does require robust, uh, discussions among commission members and, and with staff, and the quasi judicial. And you know, the, one of the things that always bothers me is, um, ex-party contacts with commission members who are deciding a case. Um, I hope that doesn't happen, and I hope, uh, Commissioner Nocita, that you'll take the attitude that I've advised the rest of the commission to have. If you know it's coming up, you, you say that you got to put it on the record or put it in writing so that it's there in the record for all the commission to see and all the public to see. The danger of having facts come in by the back door that the rest of the commission didn't see, or if a hearing's closed that the parties haven't had a chance to, uh, to respond to, bothers me and sets your whole process, uh, on end with an intelligent, uh, party, uh, that has had this done to them. So, I will always err on being conservative. Um, I'm happy to talk to you on individual cases, uh, but I think there's a, a problem in the quasi judicial, uh, field where you probably can't talk to people outside the record, at least with it, not, without not revealing it to everybody.
Sure. Can I, can I go back to what I discussed with the planning staff? Is it, do you agree with what I, I, I think I take as what I was being told by planning staff, was that the mere act of a commissioner placing information into the record during the period in which the record is open is, is a po, raises the possibility of bias?
I'm not as bothered by that. I think if everybody has a chance to respond to it, uh, I think a court and Luba would be okay on that. Um, the, the, the real concern I have is, first of all, bias, and I think you all know what bias means, but also getting facts in through the back door where nobody has a chance to respond to it. So, I, I am not offended by the, the situation that, that you just described.
But Ed, I think that if, if you were asking for information on behalf of someone...
That's a different issue.
Right. That's, that's where we were getting concerned.
Putting something in the record, I think there's no problem with. Asking for facts to be generated, it'll depend on whether the record's closed or open, that, that may be a problem.
Back, may I go back to your email thing, because we've discussed this, uh, among ourselves as well in trainings. Um, if Commissioner Nocita had, you know, sent out his, his email and then called Daphne and then called me and then called all individually about, you know, "What do you think of my idea?" He didn't, but, um, I believe that that's also now being determined to be an illegal meeting.
Yep.
Even though, because he is, we are legislating toward a decision in separate but equal terms. I, I'm hearing that at all my meetings now, is that that's to be avoided.
And that may be overly conservative city attorneys. Uh, again, I think there's a, there's a judgment issue here. There was a case involving, I think, a school district in the Eugene or Roseburg area where after a disputed meeting or disputes out of meeting, they all went out for drinks or a coffee or something like that and then talked about it, and somebody said that that was a, an illegal meeting. Court of Appeals didn't say that it was an illegal meeting, but I would hate to try to have to defend that. Uh, because, you know, you're either spending money on me to defend it, or you're spending money on both sides if it is an illegal public meeting and somebody sues on me.
Even, even if the previous, uh, meeting, a commission meeting, came to a decision already and you're going there to discuss it, because I presume it could come back at you in a different...
There's a quorum of it, the drinks.
Yeah. Well, good dis, discussion. Uh, Commissioner West?
One more. So, uh, so is it, I thought it was not appropriate to go to staff and ask for information. I thought we only were with the mail, mayor council that, we only dealt with, or mayor, manager council that we only dealt with the city manager.
It's not illegal.
It's not illegal.
You can decide your own policies.
So, but, oh, so that's not in the council manager?
No. It's just, uh...
No.
Courtesy?
It's whatever you want to call it.
It's, it's council practice.
I mean, I've, I've sent direct emails to certain staff. I think I always copy the city manager.
Uh, for instance, uh, you know, the, the copious amounts of information I'm gathering for the state of the city. Um, I wouldn't presume really to go directly to staff to say, "Please send me copious amounts of information." I asked the city manager if I could do that, and, um, I ask permission because I'm taking staff time, and I want to make sure that the manager's really aware of its importance.
Yeah, and again, I, as I've indicated folks as well, I don't have a diff, if you have a question that concerns land use, call Dan. He, he definitely knows that area technically a lot better than I do. The only thing that I ask is that you also ask me the same question. First of all, I want to make sure that you're getting a response to your question. I may have some other things to add to it. Uh, and the other piece too, I've got to make sure that their time is spent on what they've got to do, but it doesn't make any sense for you to have to run through me with every question. Now, if we get down to directing staff, then that's where we'd probably have an issue, and the charter also speaks to that as well, so. But I, you know, I'm not a real stickler on, you know, you got to come through me with every question, how, because it's, it's just a waste of your time and, and everyone else's to do that.
Thank you. It's been a good discussion, and we are adjourned.